All right, everybody, we're going to go ahead and get started for today. It is Tuesday, February 16th at 4:30. My name is Jesse Letterman, City Councilor-at-Large and Chairman of the City Council's COVID-19 Response Committee. We are here for our weekly meeting of the committee. We're joined by the City Council President, Marcus Williams, as well as City Councilor Tim Allen, City Councilor Victor Dabila, City Councilor Sean Curran, and City Councilor Melvin Edwards. We are also joined by the Commissioner of Health and Human Services, Commissioner Helen Carlton-Harris. And we are also joined by Elizabeth O'Gildie of the Springfield Food Policy Council, who we will hear from in a little while. And we are also joined by Miranda Gottlieb from Curative, which is the company running the testing site at the Eastfield Mall. So we'll have an opportunity to hear from her as well and to be able to pose some questions for her about the events taking place up there at the Eastfield Mall. So we're going to hear first from the Commissioner, then we'll move to Curative, and then we'll move to the Food Policy Council. And we also expect we may be joined by Open Pantry for that portion of the conversation as well. Commissioner Carlton-Harris, thank you for joining us again. I know you were able to give an update this morning with the mayor. We appreciate you taking the time to join us as usual on the call and turn it over to you to provide any updates to the city council that you would deem necessary and pertinent.
Thank you very much, and thank you again, Councilor Letterman, for your leadership, and certainly to the council president for standing up this very important committee. I will be brief. The data that I present this morning is up on the city's website. Should you choose to look at it, it is there. And so I will be brief for the purposes of this meeting. The other thing is the power went out at Bolin, which is where our vaccines are. And they're assuring me that the generator kicked in fine, but I'm going to need to take a couple of calls in a few minutes. So what you know and what you've heard is that the cases in the city of Springfield are declining. We had 531 cases for last week. And as you know, we had 632 cases the week before. And I believe that is a decrease of 107 cases. So from our high, which was January the 10th that I report, I'm sorry, it was January the 3rd, there was 1,177 cases. The following week, it went down to 134, the following week, 91, the following week, 41, and then we had a drop of 273 cases. This week, it's 107 cases. So we are headed in the right direction in terms of the cases decreasing for the city of Springfield. Again, the graphs are up on the city's website. I invite you to take a look. Last week, we ended with 16,217 cases. We added 531. Our total cases this week are 16,748. That is up until Saturday. Sunday and Monday's cases will be reported next week, but they are remaining consistent with what we know about this previous week. They appear to be lower, which is wonderful. We did have 10 additional deaths in the city, bringing the death total to 209. The ages ranged from 87 to 62. And so five were white, three Hispanic, one black, and one Asian. Five, seven, nine, 10, I'm sorry. Yes, that is correct. It was four, that's 10. Yep, that is correct. 150 of them were residential addresses. I should say that when I calculate the deaths, I'm going off of the burial certificates that I get in my office, and I use for those purposes the address on the death certificate. So some of these individuals may have died in the hospital, but when they transitioned to the funeral home, they use their address, their home address. And so that's how we get the addresses. AMR tested 142,444. Of that, 61,164 were Springfield residents, and the positives were 12,364. The Mason Square site tested 25 individuals last Tuesday. The New North Citizens Council tested 73 individuals last Thursday. Tomorrow will be our first day standing up the Kennedy site, and that will be from 3:00 to 11:00. As you know, the Eastfield Mall and Mason Square sites were shuttered today based on what we thought was going to be a large ice storm. The vaccine distribution, Elder Affairs assisted with 235 callers, libraries, 251, I'm sorry, Health and Human Services, 325. We are in the process, as you know, of giving our second doses to those who were given the first dose during our initial phase. We are in the process of assessing non-school sites for vaccination, including houses of worship. I have heard from houses of worship who are willing to stand up sites. We are going to be visiting those sites to make sure that they are convenient in the community and that we have what we need in order to be effective. So I will be announcing some decentralized sites as soon as we get our hands on vaccines, and we do not have them yet. The mayor and I had a call today with Commissioner Burrell from the state DPA, and she told us about a new model that they're going to use for 20 cities and towns, who they looked at the data and believed that they could use our, we could use their assistance, I'm sorry, as far as vaccine is concerned. I was very clear with her that I felt as though the VaxForce and the City Council Committee and other efforts in the city of Springfield were doing an excellent job, and I did not want individuals coming into the city and being redundant around the efforts that we're currently making. But there are things that the state can help us with, such as potentially transportation and other areas as we identify them. The 17-member VaxForce Committee will be meeting on next Tuesday, I believe it is. And that committee has 17 members. Every major organization, healthcare organization in the city is represented, Health New England, Bay State, Mercy Medical Center, the health centers, as well as other individuals who are community-based, such as New North Citizens Council and others. The names are up on the website. I will be updating them because we did add the General Counsel of Health New England, who reached out and wanted to be a part of the committee, as well as an infectious disease doctor from Mercy, who reached out. So the committee now has 17 members instead of 15 members. The new variant, there are 29 cases in Massachusetts, one in Hampton County. And I went over again the real challenge and the effort around masking to make sure people understand that it's important to continue to do universal masking, not just masking when you feel like it. We should be masking all the time until we reach that immunity that we are all looking towards. Schools, sports, we will be on the 24th testing 251 school students for soccer and football. And those individuals will be tested on the 24th for their first test. We will test them mid-season, which will be March 22nd with the second dose, and then April 12th as they come out of the season, just to make sure that they are still COVID-free. As you know, the last time we did it, we tested 201, and all of them were negative, which is a testament to the staff and coaches at Springfield Public Schools. So that is where I will leave my update. Mr. Chair and Mr. President, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. If any councils have questions for the Commissioner, I'd invite you to just raise your hand in the queue. And Commissioner, well, folks are raising their hands. My first question is, in your conversation with Commissioner Burrell in the state, you mentioned this model that they're assessing for 20 communities. So does this model include distribution of vaccines to the local Board of Health as you've requested in the past and as we've requested? Do we have an idea if they're considering moving forward with that in the near future?
I asked that question, as you know, and I got no commitment. So let me say that they heard me, because, and they heard the mayor as well, he was there. They heard us say that we were ready. Our partners, our partnership with AMR and other vaccinators is solid. We know that if we are given the vaccine, and this is exactly what we said, if we've given the vaccine, we know exactly what to do. However, the commitment was not made.
Okay, so it sounds like we're sort of in the same place there with the administration, which is no fault of yourself, Commissioner, or the mayor. I think everybody is very firmly on the same page in that regard. And so we will just all continue to push in that regard, I think, is what needs to happen. Have they provided any data, as also requested, I know by yourself and by us, relative to the mass vaccination site and how many people have actually been able to access that site from Springfield?
They are, they're giving global numbers. They're not giving specific numbers by cities and towns. And I think that we continue to have to ask for that data. And I do appreciate the fact that all of us are rowing in the same direction as far as vaccinations are concerned. And I think as long as we continue to be very vigilant about insisting that we are able to open decentralized sites, I think that will be extremely helpful.
Certainly. It's deeply concerning to me, actually, that there hasn't been a seemingly a sort of formal response from the state administration around this, because I'm now seeing it reflected in other communities across the Commonwealth, similar communications going out, asking for that model to be pursued. So we'll address that, as I know you will. Councilor Dabila, followed by Councilor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hello, Commissioner Carlton, good to see you again. And thank you for your work. I just got two quick questions for you, Commissioner, two concerns that I have and that have been brought to me. The first one is, we got in Phase 2. I do know specifically the grocery workers are part of Phase 2. So my question is, when does Phase 2 is projected to begin? I know it's February or April, but do we have a new target date? And can we, because they are essentially the grocery, the grocery workers are frontline workers. Can we, can we do for them what we do in a Bolin school, where they have one location where they can go, so that we can expedite the process for them?
So thank you very much. That's an excellent question, Counselor. Let me, let me be selfish and say that I really believe very strongly that grocery workers, transit workers, and others are really essential workers. And I don't want to debate that. I will tell you where I'm pushing now is to have teachers moved up into the next category after 65 and over, and people with two comorbidities. So I believe very strongly that teachers should not be in Phase 2, Step 3, but should be incorporated into Phase 2, Step 2, including, you know, so then after that is grocery store workers. I don't anticipate grocery store workers to be until mid-March. Let me say, I think it's going to take at least another two weeks for us to get individuals 65 and over and individuals with two comorbidities vaccinated. So I don't see that happening until mid-March or so, unless there is a real push, vaccination push, where it's going a lot quicker than it is right now. We need to do 4,000 vaccinations a day in order to get to where we need to be. And we are nowhere near that, even with the massive site. And to Counselor Letterman's point, we don't know how many Springfield residents there are included in that number.
Is that something that we can get for sure, that specific number?
We will continue to ask the Commonwealth. I'm assuming that Curative gives their data to the Commonwealth, and it's up to them to parse it out.
Right. Now, Commissioner, my last question is regarding, I want to concern my, that just dawned on me recently in the effort to get people vaccinated. I'm thinking specifically of the homebound, Commissioner. The person is bedridden that cannot leave their house, period. Do we have a plan to get them vaccinated? Specifically, I'm thinking of getting EMS into their homes to get them vaccinated.
Yes, I'm meeting with Patrick Leonardo to have that discussion for homebound individuals. I should say, right now, there is not a strategy. We have, I have a list, it's a very short list of five or six people who have reached out. So we have to, if we're going to do this, we've got to do it in one day that's mobile and going from site to site to site. And so we need to put a strategy in place. But I've asked homebound individuals, if you're homebound, please check with your personal care attendant, because that individual should have some access to vaccines. So that's another strategy that we've asked homebound individuals to utilize.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Counselor Dabila. Commissioner, just to be clear, we haven't even moved, the state has not moved to even 65-plus yet.
That's correct. That's correct. So, you know, 175 and over is done, as you know, 65 and over. And then a separate category in there is individuals even under 65 who have two comorbidities.
Okay. Counselor Allen, I apologize.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, my question was similar to Counselor Dabila's. Last week, when we met in this meeting, I think you might have left early, left before we had this discussion, Helen. But Jesse, you were there, and we were talking about exactly what he just brought up, was mobile vaccines kind of thing, and wanting to look into that for this week. And I just had a couple of questions on it. I saw, I know, I saw somewhat, some news item or something in the Boston area that they were doing mobile vaccines. I also saw the thing about Peter Pan getting involved in this and taking vaccines on buses or whatever. And is there any hope in any, either of those areas for this? Because I know it's not a ton of people, but it's still people that, and I know you said you were going to have a meeting on it, Helen, but I just wanted to ask again about that specific thing.
So we have not, mobile, we know that AMR can do drive-throughs. We know that if we set those up, we can vaccinate that way by having individuals go to a separate area after they're vaccinated for observations. I have not had any communication with Peter Pan, so I don't know what that could potentially look like as far as they're concerned. You know, I think all of us can set systems in place or processes in place once we know if we're going to get the vaccine. You know, AMR is ready to do a drive-through and hope, potentially, without having individuals get out of their car. But vaccine distribution is going to be critical to anything we do strategically to move forward. Counselor Allen.
But just on that point, what kind of, what causes vaccines to arrive here? Is it just, is it by request from you, or is it, we'll take as many as you can give us? Or is there an order or a system to how vaccines arrive at Eastfield Mall or with you or anywhere?
Well, I think Eastfield Mall, Curative can speak to that. But right now, the city, I'm sorry, the state is focusing on their mass vaccination sites. They are not, the smaller, I know that they're doing CVS up on Parker Street. That's one of the sites that they are standing up. But for the most part, they are looking really at the mass vaccination site. The reason why that's so, so concerning is CVS on Parker Street is not a high-density area where we need vaccinations to be readily available. Those individuals who live in that area can drive to a vaccination. This is me, and maybe I'm being, I'm making a generalization versus being the north end, the south end, and Mason Square, where people really have challenges around transportation. So how do they make the decision? That's an excellent question. We were, I was talking to, when I was talking to them today, there are many people who are on the COVID-19 Task Force, including Dr. Kerewick, who only met one time. And so how they're making decisions around vaccine rollout is something that I don't have the answer to.
Okay, thank you.
But clearly, they've decided that the mass vaccination site, some CVSs are a part of their strategy. But we will continue to push for vaccine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner and Counselor Allen. Commissioner, I know you need to attend to the Bolin situation. We appreciate you taking the time. We agree with you. I am, I was also surprised by the particular CVS location that was chosen, especially in terms of its proximity to the mass vaccination site. And to Counselor Allen's point, one of the things that is being made clear in the last week, if you see some of the reports from area hospitals, is that even more vaccines have been shifted away from those hospitals and towards mass vaccination sites. Again, we don't even know how many individuals from Springfield have been able to access that site. I'm very concerned to hear that they have not given that information to the Commissioner, because if they won't give it to the Commissioner and they haven't replied to our letter with the information, that's just the data, let alone the vaccines themselves. It's starting to make me wonder why they don't want to give us that number. So we'll all continue to push around that. And, you know, I think that everybody's made very clear that equity is, equity is the issue here that's at hand. So Commissioner, thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you. I'll see you at 5:30, right?
5:45, Commissioner.
5:45, take care.
Thank you very much. All right, so we will move to our, move to our next guest, and then we'll move on to our third issue. But I did receive a request from the council president for, to invite representatives from Curative onto the call. This came following some of the events that occurred at Curative last week. We know that everybody was concerned with the reports of lines and individuals having to wait outside. I know many people had reached out, including city councilors, the administration, around getting that resolved. And so we do have Miranda Gottlieb with us via Zoom, Vice President of Curative. So Miranda, at this time, I invite you to introduce yourself, and then we'll take some questions for counselors.
Thank you, and hello, everyone. My name is Miranda Gottlieb. I'm the Vice President of Marketing for Curative, and I had the pleasure of visiting Springfield, Massachusetts, and the Eastfield Mall over the weekend to receive Mayor Sardo and also Governor Baker. So it was, it was great to be able to be on the ground and to be in your community. I'll start off by saying, Curative, you know, we've been around for a year. We started off in PCR testing, and we've grown our testing apparatus to be over 13,000 sites across the United States, testing over 16 million people. So we've built an operational excellence and a skill in being able to scale mass testing across the US. And we're bringing that same ability to vaccines. And to date, we have already vaccinated over 200,000 people in different communities across the US. Yesterday alone, at the Eastfield Mall, we vaccinated 953 people. And today, as of 1:00 PM Eastern Time, 657 vaccines were delivered. So the operations last week, as you all were aware, had some changes that needed to be made. And I'm pleased to share with you that Curative and the nimble team at the Eastfield Mall with Dave Thompson and his folks have collaborated with us to make several adjustments to both the configuration of the site. We've hired an additional 21 staff last week, and we'll hire additional 20-plus this coming week as we work to scale up this site. It's currently able to vaccinate about 1,500 people, and we look to be able to scale that in the weeks to come. So in addition to the configuration of the site, which we now have changed to route through the mall, so folks are able to wait, should they come early inside the mall out of the cold. We've also brought in additional wheelchairs. We've changed up the process in which we receive people and we check them in to make sure that that is optimized. And we continue to make adjustments as we see the opportunity to improve with our software, being able to schedule patients for their second dose on-site, and other efforts that, you know, we work really closely with the state and with the public health officials to ensure that we are, you know, continuing to vaccinate as many people as we can according to the guidelines of the state. So we'll continue to work closely with the Commonwealth, the public health officials, and of course, your community. And we're so glad to have such excellent partners in the city of Springfield and the Eastfield Mall. I'm glad to take any questions, and thanks for having me.
Thank you, Miranda. Any questions for Miranda on Curative up at the Eastfield Mall or any other questions? President Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and apologies for not being able to join on camera today. But Miranda, thank you, thank you for that. You pretty much answered every question that I had, certainly in relation to the long lines and folks waiting outside in the cold. So I'm certainly glad to hear that there's other accommodations being made to mitigate that issue. And, you know, like, as Counselor Letterman has often said, you know, when we first visited the site, we saw a very seamless operation taking place. So it's good to see that we're returning to that and also making the adjustments as, of course, we move into other phases, which are going to include more people as well. So I appreciate, I know you're busy, and just wish you well out there and be safe, please. Thank you.
Thank you, President Williams. Any other questions for Miranda on Curative? Feel free to raise your hand in the queue. I don't see any hands raised now. I do have one question, Miranda, which is relative to, oh, I do see a couple of hands raised now. So we'll go Counselor Allen and then Counselor Dabila.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Miranda, is there, you talked about the logistics and improving the whole logistics at Eastfield Mall, et cetera. That sounds great. We have not been able to get information on who, you know, how many, we're interested in Springfield people getting vaccinated. Is there any way to get macro-level information on who, you know, how many of our community have been vaccinated?
I think there is a way. I don't have that dashboard immediately available. I'm actually based out of Austin, Texas, and I'm one of the folks who's experiencing the loss of power. So I don't have that dashboard immediately available right now, but I can certainly look into pulling some numbers. Would likely be based off of ZIP code is probably the, you know, the best macro, you know, and some of the, you know, male, female kind of demographics, but can certainly look into, certainly can look into the ZIP code and send that over to you all.
That'd be great, because we have a community of about 155,000 people. And we know the numbers on the clinics we've run or that Helen's area has run. But we, you know, we are hoping that a lot of our people are getting vaccinated at Eastfield Mall, and we'd love to be able to confirm that. Thank you.
Excellent point, Miranda. Yes, if you can, if you can send us that data, both Springfield total or by ZIP code, either way would be very helpful to the committee. Counselor Dabila.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Miranda, thank you for your presentation. It was very thorough, and you did answer many questions. But I'm sorry, did I hear you say that you are in Texas?
I'm currently in Texas today. Yes, we have a lab out of Texas, and we also have vaccination efforts here. So that's where I am currently today. But I was in Springfield on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Oh, so you have physically been here, right?
Yes, yes, I visited the site and was able to see it and receive Mayor Sardo and Governor Baker on Saturday.
So we, I guess what I'm asking is, do we have a dedicated person here in Springfield from your company 24/7 to look after the site?
Yes, sir. Yes, we have, we have many people who are dedicated. I lead marketing and communications for the company and happen to be on-site. I'm very familiar with everything that's happening on the site and work closely with the Public Health Department and the state. And so that's why I'm here today is because, and we do have several people who are dedicated on-site to working with the community. We also have a communications director who's working in the state of Massachusetts as well.
Okay, who's the director for the local site?
The director for site operations.
Yep.
The regional lead for vaccinations, name is Dr. Sly Douglas.
Okay, I am not still clear whether there's somebody local. But moving on to that question, you talked about scaling up, which is obvious to see something needs to be done. How are we going to interact, the scaling of operations, to conform to the capacity of the mall as well?
This really has to do with dose allocation. So we work with the state, and we will be scaling as the state allocates doses, and we will meet their requirements. So that's, you know, really, we work, you know, day in and day out and every week to receive the allocated doses, and we'll continue to scale and hire as additional doses are, you know, directed to us.
Right. Mr. Chair, I think, I realize all this depends also on what the government does into Mr. Chair, I I think I realize all this depends also on what the government does into the capacity, whether or not he increases the capacity limits. But I think we need to explore that that as we move forward and the Curative scales up. That we don't suddenly end up with three thousand people at the mall, which would be good for business for them, but we basically are eating a petri dish. That's what we're going to be doing. And so there's something for the future where something that needs to be put up in the whiteboard to ponder later on. And thank you, Miranda. I'm still not clear about the local presentation, but I will follow up later. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Dabla. I agree relative to the the scaling operations. Miranda, I think to Counselor Dabla's point, I mean, I've met Dr. Douglas. I know that he's on the ground in Massachusetts in general between Danvers and Springfield, but I believe Dr. Douglas, I know, also travels throughout your your company's operations. I mean, I think for folks that are sort of aren't aware, I mean, Curative has a nationwide footprint at this point. And so i- is there somebody, for example, that councillors could contact in the Springfield site that is always at the Springfield site, I think is Counselor Dabla's question?
We have someone. So we have someone that we've recently hired named Karen Lilly, who's dedicated to the Springfield site on the ground. And she's the Community Relations Person who we've hired there. And so, you know, I would defer to her and she's, if not already connected to, folks can certainly be connected. And she will be the kind of local liaison for for community organizations.
Sure. So if you want to send me her contact info, I can share it with with committee members so they can be able to contact her. Are there any other questions for Miranda before we move to our next agenda item from the council? Seeing none, Miranda, I just had one question, which is relative to your safety and and health procedures that are in place for your staff. So can you talk to us a little bit about how you're ensuring that the staff that you've hired on? Are, you know, able to stay healthy during their time working with you and also in terms of the fact that they're interacting with with so many members of our community, including in such high risk categories? Can you talk to us about how that works and and what your processes are there?
Yes, so Curative has a biosecurity protocol, which includes testing individuals prior to their in-person training. We test all staff, so both employees, contractors, really any person who's going to be on site. Working with us, even if it's it's just for the day, we're testing everyone daily with our our PCR test. And that allows us to be able to track individuals, you know, for for their health status. And we also implement rigorous PPE requirements for anyone who's interacting with with patients directly. So gloves, masking, gowns, you know, changing of PPE as, you know, as per standard operating procedure and compliance. So, you know, distancing of staff during lunchtimes and any other, any other type of interactions along with, you know, PPE utilization and a rigorous testing protocol allows us to maintain a a safe workplace for both our employees and of course, our patients.
Is that a rapid test that you administer?
Curative has a PCR test, so it's the the test that we use all across the US. So it it is not the rapid antigen. It's a PCR molecular test.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Miranda. Seeing no questions, I think we'll move on to our next item. We appreciate you joining us and we'll look forward to seeing that data if you can provide it as well as being connected with your community liaison on the ground.
My pleasure. Thanks, everyone. Take care.
All right. And so moving to our our final item for the day, we're very glad to be joined by Mrs. Elizabeth O'Gilvy of the Springfield Food Policy Council. We were also joined, I believe, by Terry Maxi, although it looks like he may have had to log off. But we had invited or had hoped that they'd be able to join us for our original food security conversation. Unfortunately, they weren't able to make that meeting. However, I really thought it was important to make sure that we also had their perspective. We heard from some of the larger providers and sort of the regional side of things, but you know, I think that Ms. O'Gilvy and Mr. Maxi have a much more, you know, strong take on what's going on on the ground in Springfield, as well as Ms. O'Gilvy has a really extensive policy background on these issues. And so I think that's relevant. So I wanted to spend the second half of our meeting with them. And so I'll turn it over to Ms. O'Gilvy just to introduce herself. I think everybody knows her, but introduce herself, the work of the Springfield Food Policy Council, and then we can just engage in the the same discussion we normally would. So Ms. O'Gilvy, welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. For those who don't know, the Springfield Food Policy Council was the first non-municipal outside of Boston food policy councils to be formed in the state. So Springfield has been a leader around food access, food equity, food justice, food policy forever. The council's about twelve years old. And historically, we were known for beginning to raise the issues of health disparities that relates to food-related preventable disease. To help the council sort of ground themselves, for those of you who may not be as in the loop around food. There is a foundation called the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. It is national and it ranks county health. For every county in the country. In the Commonwealth, Hampton County, with Springfield being the largest city within that county, has ranked number fourteen since Robert Wood Johnson began ranking. We have the highest levels of these diseases that are often thought of as sort of destiny or fate in the BIPOC community, specifically in the Latinx and in the Black or African American community. And those would be hypertension, both at the adult level and at the child level. Obesity, both at the adult level and the child level. Diabetes, both at the adult level and child level. And when I say child diabetes, I don't mean the autoimmune kind that kids sometimes get. I mean, type two, the kind that adults are generally found themselves suffering from after a lifetime of lack of healthy food access, lack of physical exercise, diabetes is often secondary to obesity. But the fact that we have these incredibly high rates for our children should be a great alarm and is, I'm sure the Commissioner, we're still here, she would name with me that it's a public health crisis for our city. And one of the things that puts us most at risk in COVID has illuminated what the Food Policy Council has been talking about for at least ten years. Because we don't have the data on race, I would make a a really subjective generalization that many of the Black and Latinx community members that are dying at disparate rates in our communities are due to these comorbidities that you, your public health folks talk about. And those are the underlying disease that people suffer from that when COVID happens. Those diseases are exacerbated and it becomes much harder to battle COVID. When you think of COVID as this highly inflammatory disease, all those diseases that I listed have inflammation at the heart of them. And so the way that plays out in terms of patients who are obese, they often can't be flipped and rotated the way they need to to ease the breathing symptoms that they exist as a part of COVID. People with diabetes and hypertension have large levels of inflammation in their bodies already. So then COVID hits and they're basically on fire, for lack of better non-clinical language. So it becomes incredibly challenging to save them. And many people who suffer from hypertension are also diabetic and are also suffering from obesity. And we often think about obesity as a state, a condition of choice, but it's directly linked to the amount of healthy food that we have access to. Some of you have heard me say this. I live in the McKnight neighborhood on Dartmouth Street. There are ten McDonald's within a mile and three quarters of my house that are fairly easy to get to. But unless you have a car and can drive to the nearest Big Y or up Boston Road to Price Point, particularly in the time of pandemic. Access issues have greatly increased. So our work has been really focused on municipal, statewide and national level policies that move that needle. Along the way, we've also done some very specific work in the areas of urban ag, urban agriculture. Those would be school gardens, community gardens, the farm sites that gardening the community where I serve on the board manages on Walnut Street, Hancock Street, and historically on Central Street. And out of those sites, we sell folks fresh produce at very affordable rates now, especially because of the Healthy Incentives Program, which I can tell the council more about. But I really wanted to come and talk to you and particularly with Terry. Terry Maxi, representing Open Pantry, the Springfield Food Policy Council, our close and and long-term ally and partner Square One. And Mercy Hospital were one of four sites that were chosen out of over eighty applicants by the Health Policy Commission to be funded for a two-year grant. So we are in the first year of that grant and working really diligently on coming up with strategies, both at the policy level, but in the real life, actual implementation level to eradicate or reduce the amount, the lack of healthy food access. And partnering with Terry is pretty incredible because they have this broader view around emergency food. But also an understanding that much of the food that comes to families through food pantries, it's not healthy food. It is filling food and I live in a space where I often say, any food is better than no food. But we really want high-quality food. The thing that I'm most proud of that we've accomplished to date was advocating for and securing universal free breakfast and lunch and what now manifests as dinner in the time of COVID for all of our students. We nudged the city, if you will, to apply for what's called community eligibility, which our city qualifies for because of the high poverty rates. This immediately increased participation in school breakfast and lunch because families no longer face the burden of the excessive application process. I'm from Springfield, moved back here in two thousand and eight with my husband, who was a an educator with Springfield Public Schools, working at Commerce High School, Chestnut High School and one of the alternative schools. And he was consistently telling me stories about kids who were hungry, which I was a free lunch kid. I didn't understand it. But then when he talked about the application being in English, you know that our majority population is more than sixty percent, maybe it's sixty-five or sixty-eight percent Latinx. And and these applications were just burdensome and unnecessary. So that was the first big change we made. And then we advocated for breakfast after the bell in the classroom because kids were still shamed by going to the cafeteria. Everyone knew they were the free breakfast kids. So there are a lot of kids who we knew weren't eating because nurses were reporting really high levels of hunger visits. Initially, the superintendent would not legislate breakfast in the classroom, even though it turned out to be a financial boon for the district, the way school food works. Not sure if everyone knows that you're reimbursed for every meal you serve. So the more kids that eat, the more money the district has to buy better and higher quality food. And I see that Terry is joining us. So I'll wind in a minute so Terry can talk about Open Pantry and then we can talk about the work we're doing together. But I visited every school nurse at every school in our city and learned about what we call hunger visits. That's when kids go see the nurse and say, I'm dizzy. I can't stand up. Those visits are off the charts on Monday because we had kids showing up and saying, I didn't have anything to eat since lunch on Friday. So we worked really closely with the school district and helped to secure and identify funding sources for the Culinary Nutrition Center that is now built. And I can tell you that Springfield pre-pandemic was feeding our kids better quality food than even some of the more affluent districts because they were buying local produce and processing baking from scratch and making tomato sauce from scratch that we used in everything from chili to pasta. The pandemic changed some things, but because of the long-term relationships, we were able to help them position themselves for some state funding that enabled them to package better quality food and hit the ground running and our kids never missed a meal. And now they're served meals they can get if they access it, three meals a day, seven days a week. So as a city, we should be really proud of that. I leave them alone now because we're in the pandemic and I just want kids to get food, but you can trust that the Food Policy Council will be back at the helm urging them to make the food as healthy as possible because you can imagine if we change the meals that kids are getting at school, even if we go back to just breakfast and lunch. In five years, we could see a reduction in obesity rates and hypertension rates, all those things I outlined. So food can sometimes not seem as critical as affordable housing and economic development, and they all fit together. But I'm telling you, a hungry kid cannot learn. So while we're pushing our schools to improve, we need to make it possible for kids to sit up in the classroom. We used to average fifteen hundred hunger visits from our schools and that was kids going to the nurse and all the nurses had granola bars and half of the teachers did. That they were buying with their own pocket. And once we instituted breakfast after the bell, hunger visits dropped by ninety percent. And we were having less than three hundred hunger visits on average. And those were the kids who were getting to school at ten o'clock in the morning and missing breakfast entirely. Pandemic happened and we had to shift our focus to more food provision. So throughout the school year, the Food Policy Council raised money and we farmed eight of the school garden sites and gave all of that produce away. We also raised money from large foundations like the Community Foundations and many more very small donations. And we're able to pay for and secure the relationship that brought the fresh produce boxes to Springfield. So four hundred and fifty families had access to fresh produce on a weekly basis, every week. The school district got all of the attention in Sedexo, but we delivered those, those boxes were delivered to Sedexo. They refrigerated them in the culinary center that is owned by the city of Springfield and then distributed them at the school meals. So all of that money was raised by the Food Policy Council, which is a very small grassroots organization. We also installed raised beds garden. We built wooden boxes that were four feet by eight feet. We provided the soil and we provided the seedlings and fifty-eight families and three new community gardens were started that way. We anticipate somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty families getting that additional benefit this year. So Terry, I mentioned that we had started to work together. I did not talk about Mass Up, but I did. I wanted to say if I didn't think that the way Open Pantry provides services is incredibly magnificent. And because we're Springfield-based, the Western Mass Food Bank is a long-term partner. All of these other entities are partners. But we are working here in the city. We have our hands on the ground, hands and feet on the ground. Terry and his team were serving dinner on Christmas when other facilities shut down. He recognized that, yeah, we're all nervous about the pandemic. We're going to practice the best safety that we have. And we're going to feed people. He also agreed to, everyone jokes about me wanting to turn everybody into a farmer in Springfield, but Open Pantry is helping to live that dream by helping to manifest a garden on their site. So I'm your PR person, Terry, and now the floor is yours.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Liz and City Council. Thank you for having me. You want me to just start off and talk about what's going on?
Terry, I'm so sorry. I think you accidentally muted yourself there. I just want to unmute.
All right, here we go.
All right. Yeah, we did. We'd love, we heard an overview from from Ms. Liz on what Food Policy Council had kind of shifted to during the pandemic. And we would love to hear from you about what you're all working on and also, you know, how how the city council can be supportive.
Well, right now, as you know, the pandemic has changed, you know, truly the way we operate normally. We would have like a normal day, for example, at our food pantry, we would have anywhere between, you know, a hundred, a little over a hundred visitors. We're now averaging somewhere around fifty or sixty participants daily. What we're seeing is that about twenty to thirty percent of those participants we're seeing on day, basically are new participants to the food pantry. So as the pandemic has created a number of challenges, including increase our unemployment in our community, we're finding that more people are coming to our pantry for the first time. So we are making sure that we we have enough food available, nutritional food available to to meet that demand. We've actually, when I talk about the dynamics of our pantry. We are, you know, we continue our normal process intake process. However, we're not we are, um, you know, we continue our normal process intake, uh, process. However, we're not allowing, you know, our, our client base to come into our building. So we have set up a, uh, within our foyer area to, um, to cater to, to the needs of our community while keeping our staff and community safe from, uh, COVID. We've also worked with, uh, the, um, Farm to Family Program, from the feds. So we've been able to, um, offer in addition to what we would normally give as poundage for food, but we'll also give that thirty-two pound a box that we receive from the farm and food as a supplement to what we give them. In addition to that, we have, uh, as a pantry and organization in collaboration with Springfield College, we had two days where we had food drives, um, uh, to the city of Springfield. So those two food drives that we set up, uh, again, in collaboration with Springfield College, we distributed somewhere around fifty thousand pounds of food uh, in, in two days, which was, um, was phenomenal. And unfortunately, uh, we ran out, which lends itself to the demand in our community. And, um, we are, we continue to reach out to, as they shuffle around the the produce or companies that they, that they deal with to make sure that we're part of that distribution in Western Mass. We still have, we're still offering, um, uh, our feeding programs, our Loews and Fishes program at South Congregational Church. We're serving somewhere around a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty meals per day. Our high point, of course, is at lunchtime. Right now, due to the weather, um, and that kind of declines, um, as, um, uh, night falls and we run into our, our evening crowd. But it's a meal to go program. So what we're doing is preparing a meal and we'll box that along with a beverage and a dessert, and we would hand it out at the door to the community. So those programs, despite the pandemic and some of our challenges with COVID, you know, we are still providing, uh, programs or food, uh, and feeding the community. Um, as Liz alluded to earlier, you know, we will continue to offer our holiday meals, you know, uh, in the midst of this pandemic because there's a need. You know, we handed out, uh, four hundred, uh, about four hundred and fifty meals for Christmas. So, um, more, um, home deliveries, but we still had that population in close proximity to the school that had no transportation and were able to walk, um, to the school and, and, and get a meal. And as you know, uh, Christmas and Thanksgiving weather didn't cooperate with us. But nonetheless, um, you know, you know, the dedicated staff and volunteers that we had uh, pushed forward and, and we were able to buy that food to the community and a safe environment um, that kept not only our volunteers safe, but, um, the population that we served.
But you're muted there, Mrs. Liz. Thank you so much, Terry. Liz, I know you had some more to add.
One of the things I wanted to lift out about Terry's work, you know, I, I want us to not need emergency food, but we need to tell the truth about emergency food. It's not emergency food anymore. It is deeply, uh, an integral part of the way that families are feeding themselves, that parents are feeding their kids. There was a time when my mother had to occasionally go to a pantry or had to get commodities before they were food stamps to close the gap. Now we have working families and families that historically worked and some who didn't work, who, the way they used to manage their food expenses, it doesn't work anymore without a pantry. And you as individuals have experienced the higher food prices and the shortages when you've gone to stores. We can drive around, you know, I make very little money compared to directors in the city who run, who have larger budgets and their impacts are not as visible. I'm leading up to, you asked how the city council might help. And I hope people will have a lot of questions, but one of the things is that Terry and I both have pretty significant fundraising lives. His is far larger than mine. And there are organizations similar to ours that receive state-level appropriations out of the budget. I have been working with Rep. Williams for a number of years and, and Counselor Letterman has always been attentive around food issues. To illuminate a, a place where there is a gap that I want to help close, our city council does not seem to have the information it needs to advocate as effectively either for Springfield-based organizations or for Springfield in terms of equity at the state level. And so I think if the council, whether it's my sending a brief, right now, there are five bills that have been launched at the state legislature that could have impact on Springfield. I'm happy to send you briefs on these bills and the, if we have representatives or senators in our area that haven't sponsored the bill or if there are sponsors, generally food bills are not sponsored by anyone in our city who represent us at the state level. And that's really important because when those bills get launched, they're often bills that would most benefit our city because of its racial and economic population. But we don't drive the conversation. I mean, I've been to the State House, I think, more than, well, for sure, more than most of the city councillors, and that's my job. Like, it's my job to keep my eye on what's happening. It's my job to get to know not just the legislators in Western Mass, but all across the state so that they know that some of these bills they're passing originated here. Because like all of the rest of you, I'm tired of the story that gets told about Springfield that we're just waiting for our problems to be fixed, when in fact, around food and the way that we serve residents, we're leading because Open Pantry doesn't just provide emergency food. They are running shelters and supportive housing and a store where families can go get and buy clothes. And so they should be first in line for city funding. You know, there's such murkiness around how that money gets, comes into the city, but we don't know how it gets distributed. And then you start to see organizations receive funding that don't have the measurable outcomes. And our work, the, the thing that's unique about Terry and I and these other organizations that are working with us on the Health Policy Commission grant is that our work is designed to be upstream. So we meet folks where they're at right now, Terry and the vast numbers of people that he feeds, the Food Policy Council, and the smaller numbers of people that we provide healthy food access to. But we're also always thinking about and supporting and advocating for legislative policy that's going to create an increase in the spending power that residents have. For instance, there is a benefit called HIP, the Healthy Incentives Program, and Counselor Letterman is probably so tired of hearing me talk about it.
I was, I was actually going to specifically ask you to talk about that piece.
So HIP provides an extra benefit to anybody who is enrolled in SNAP. And that benefit isn't immediately visible. When families go and use their EBT card in a store, they receive a receipt that tells them exactly what their food stamp balance is. HIP doesn't show up because it can only be used at a farm stand, at a farm store, or to participate in a CSA, which is the program where you get a box of produce, generally only open to the very affluent because those seasonal, um, offerings cost about six hundred dollars. And right now, Springfield, less than half a percent of the people who are eligible for this benefit exercise it. So what that translates in to is an additional forty dollars every month for a family of one to two people. Three people to five people receive an extra sixty dollars a month. And anybody over that receives an additional eighty dollars. Imagine if those dollars were being spent, it would free up that additional money on their SNAP benefit for protein purchases, to buy meat, to buy eggs. And so we're working at the state level to make corner stores eligible to become HIP authorized vendors. And then my plan is to help those stores be able to offer healthy food access. Since we could not develop any city will around the one grocery store that we were focused on, and that was the one in Mason Square. That was such a disheartening experience. I worked on that for five years and watched developed Springfield spend all kinds of money on consultants and all sorts of things till there was no more money and Mason Square was left without a grocery store. And it wasn't just Mason Square. The grocery stores in the north end, you know, there's one and it's challenging at best. So having the city council really understand what these food access and equity issues are from a public health framework, because if we had healthier food, we wouldn't have so many people dying of COVID. We just wouldn't because they wouldn't have these comorbidities. And which is just aligned with Jesse, uh, Counselor Letterman's work around the biomass plan. We've got to think about making our city healthier. And when we do it from a racial equity lens, when we're a majority people of color city, everybody benefits. We all do better when we all do better. Go ahead, Counselor.
So, so I think that, um, you raise a great point about the city council being able to provide some support around the legislative agenda in Boston. Um, you know, certainly I think the key there is, is education. I know I had a chance to attend um, a year and a half ago, before the pandemic, you guys hosted a legislative, a legislative briefing, uh, with the state delegation, but you invited a couple of councillors and we were able to learn more. So I think, um, I think if you send that information over, I think you'd, you'd see a lot of support from.
You should know, we invited all of the councillors. I called everybody. So those councillors who were serving, they, it just, it's hard. I know we're a hard city.
I understand. So I think, I, I don't think it's, I don't think so. I think it's just about finding the information. I think in the, in the context of this committee, which is, you know, sort of appointed by the president around the pandemic response, I think everything you've raised is, is relevant. And I think that the, the HIP, the HIP benefit extension, um, which I heard you speak about it in another, another panel that we were both a part of a couple of weeks ago, um, is, is an immediate piece that, that could be very helpful, especially um, in communities that are underserved by a, a full grocery store. And, and really, even if they do have access to the grocery store, they can't spend that benefit there, right? So I think that, you know, that's one piece. If you can send some information over, we could certainly speak with the state delegation and we do have, you know, two members of the city council that, that recently joined the state delegation. So I think, you know, that, that would be really great if, uh, if we could provide that information to the full council and perhaps do something around.
And if they can just get it out to their constituents, make it a top priority for those councillors who have aides or interns that are working on them and with them, I would be happy to train anybody. We need every single person in this city talking about it. Because there is so much shame around not having access to food and not being able to feed your kids. And I say every day, the shame is not on the family or the person who can't feed themselves because of economics. The shame is on us, starting with, you know, the federal administration, but coming all the way down to our city. And then I'm going to be really transparent. Look at where the money goes. Several years ago, Representative Williams asked about the mitigation funds that were being paid by the casino. There's just not transparency and very small amounts of those revenue directed towards an open pantry or a food policy council could have huge impacts. I know farmers that I could connect Terry with, that we could purchase fresh, healthy produce from that could be distributed to their families. Or Terry might be able to hire a staff person to help talk with families to find out what they need. And we can do a lot with a little in the way that other organizations absorb funds and aren't having COVID, uh, response and weren't having significant response before COVID. And I really hope that our city councillors will take that to heart. Stop celebrating organizations that are not having immediate impact. I don't even care if they're food organizations. If somebody else can do something in the space of asthma, make sure that they get funded and support. And I know you're all really busy. It is incredibly disheartening to come and talk to the council and have the councillor who invited me be the one that's the most interested. I'm on Zooms all day long. My date starts every day at six-thirty. So I understand the need for work, but when you are typing, you are not learning. And, and I'm telling you this as your constituent. I don't care which ward you got elected from. You are my city councillors and I represent a large body of your constituents. This is the poorest and the sickest city in the Commonwealth. I know you know that already. But I am saying to you, if I can take the time after a really long day and sit here and try to help you understand how these issues are so critical, you could show me the courtesy of pretending to listen.
So Ms. Ogilvy, um, Ms. Ogilvy, I, I certainly appreciate, uh, your passion and all that you do for the city as well as Mr. Maxey. I know we've, uh, worked together many times. And I, and I think that the entire council is concerned with these issues, is engaged. And so, you know, we certainly, we want to know how the city council can continue to support the work of the Springfield Food Policy Council. I think we've identified a policy area, uh, today, uh, where they could, which is around that, that HIP extension. And to the degree that we can provide that support, we certainly will. Um, we do have to move to a, a meeting of the Health and Human Services Committee at five forty-five.
Thanks for having me.
So I think that, you know, we, we appreciate you coming and I appreciate, uh, being able to, to add the agenda item today as well. Um, so I think what probably makes the most sense is for, if you could provide that list of, of state policies you were referring to for us to talk with the state delegation about, and, uh, Mr. Maxey, the same, of course, goes for you as well. I'll certainly make sure that that gets distributed to the full body. Uh, this is just a committee of the council, so we don't have all the councillors present today, but I know, uh, there's great, you know, great passion and, and support uh, for, for the work that you do and, and the work.
And Counselor, you know, I'm not just passionate. I am smart. And I have moved policy for our city in a way that you would find hard to find two other people who have done it. So I know you're paying me a compliment. My passion in this moment is around not feeling very valued and respected by this council. And I would remind you that it's an election year. And people are going to start to hold the councillors individually much more accountable than we historically have. Because I've been coming and talking to you for years, some of you who have been there. Counselor Allen will tell you, I would grab his ear at the Zenetti fence when he was dropping off or picking up his grandchildren, because I don't miss an opportunity. That's not because I'm passionate. It's because I'm intentional and I'm trying to help others besides Counselor Letterman. And I know some of you are very passionate about very specific things and I appreciate that because it all fits together. But this is exactly why people don't come talk to you. So I hope whoever comes next will at least feel a bit more appreciated to share these critical issues with you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And I'm not speaking for Terry. I'm just speaking for me.
Well, thank you very much, uh, for, for your time and, and for coming to brief, uh, the council about that work. Certainly, as I mentioned, you can provide that information to us. We'll get that out uh, to all the councillors. And let's continue the dialogue, uh, around how we can continue to be uh, supportive and, and what the actual, you know, what the council can and can't do as well. Because I think the, the most important thing about the council is, is really as a uh, platform for residents, and that's why we have committees like this to be able to come and share those concerns, even if it's not within the direct power of the council. I'm always an advocate for just using the platform of the council to speak out. Sometimes I think that that, that goes a long way as well, even if things.
Yeah, and money does too. Respectfully, this council approves the city budget.
Ms. Ogilvy, but Ms. Ogilvy, I'm, I'm happy.
Yeah, I know. I'm gonna go. I'm gonna go, but I just want you to, you know, like.
But I also want to be clear about what the council can and can't do. I mean, the council can't, can't appropriate funds.
No, but the council can ask some questions about how funds are directed and that's all I'm asking the council to do. I'm not asking the council to appropriate funds for me. I certainly would ask you to appropriate funds for Terry if you had that within your capacity. But the council can also consider the, uh, procurement contracts that they enter into and ask those contractors how they're doing and what their other benefits are. The contractors can evaluate. I know you gotta go.
I don't want to, I don't want to cut you off, but I do have.
It's okay.
We do have another meeting at five forty-five and I think a fine conversation to have. So I, I think we, I think we should continue the conversation. I appreciate you coming. I appreciate Mr. Maxey coming in and all the councillors for joining us for the committee meeting today. Uh, we do have another committee meeting at five forty-five, so at this time I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. And thank you very much. All those in favor?
Hi.
Were adjourned for three minutes until the HHS meeting at five forty-five. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, Terry and Elizabeth.